I was calling the New York 632 for the town council, especially our tools. Moving on to item two, discussion of council goals and identify possible objective activities. So, and at least I would be able to share your screen or if I go over, I know I have a copy of the packet, but the compiled list of notes. Alright, so kind of based on the discussions we had where we sort of utilized the past vision statement. Or at least extrapolate kind of for fortified general goals. One of which was provide efficient and high quality services in a fiscally positive and efficient way. Promote sound infrastructure, promote sound recreational opportunities, engage citizens, we need to be committed to the betterment of the entire community. And then some additional process notes, there's a series of bullet points to review. And I want to kind of have it as like a more informal session of questions, concerns, comments. I think it would be ideal to go through each of the four points plus the process notes to see if there's anything that looks good that we're looking forward on. What do I want changes or ones that we don't want in the final product? So that being said, for number one, A, replace capital equipment in a timely manner in accordance with capital equipment replacement schedules.
Point border, Mr. Chair, I would just move to, for while we're discussing these issues, suspend the rules of order. That way you could have an open discussion on it. I think rather than having to go through it, that will be my request.
Yeah, I think that's how we did it last time around for our whole session. So if anyone's in objection that I've been seconded for that motion. Motion made by Councilman Nuccio, all's in favor, is he going to have a saying aye? Oh, it's unanimous. Alright, so Robert's rule is suspended, so three willing notes, you know, Lisa's.
She wanted to know who made the motion.
Yeah, move up all I counsel.
I'm sorry, I thought it was okay. It's okay. I'm so sorry. It doesn't matter. So I guess Lisa is one, the goal, and two, the things we're going to do to meet that goal?
Yep, one is the goal, two is the objectives, which you would probably call goals. But the way we have to set it up based on the vision. Number one comes from the vision that we currently live by. And then two, the ABC are the objectives. The little I's and such are also sub-objectives.
So for me, when I do goals, I say, how do I measure this? How can I say that I did this? And A to me is, that's just kind of our job. I don't know that that's a goal personally, because it's part of the budget process. So.
Well, I think. Here, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. With that statement, some of the situations, and you may not have been privy to it in the past, is that a lot of times we've had equipment that's been pushed out way too long. So. If, and there were very good reasons why it had to happen. It was just trying to create balance with the budget. And now we're actually at a point with our capital where we can't push some things out any longer. So if you had that as, let's just call these little someone's goals, just for your discussion points. If you had a goal to replace it in a timely manner, then, you know, from there you'd have to say, I added with capital equipment replacement schedule, so you could, at least your measure would be, we have a schedule of when it's supposed to be replaced. And if through the budget process you replace that schedule, that item, did you replace it in accordance to the schedule? Yes or no? That's the way I could see you could maybe measure that and to try to keep things so that you do keep up with it in a timely manner. Sometimes when you push things out, it ends up, it could possibly cost more money because of the cost of the items going up as time goes by. But it's a trade-off and their decisions you make.
Right, I get that. I guess I see the struggle as that's not a goal that we can 100% know, because it goes in the budget and then the budget goes to the townspeople. And if we throw, like, say, we're going to replace every piece of equipment that's on our schedule that's outdated and it's X amount of money and it goes in the budget and the town says, no, we don't want this a budget, it's too high. We didn't meet our goal, but it's not our goal. Like, that's not our goal to meet. Our goal is to advocate for the capital, or however we want to word it. I don't think we can commit to replace capital equipment. And I like, again, I'm just nothing on like the, how do we define that? Capital equipment schedule, I get, but we can't own that because it's not our final decision. So if it doesn't get put into a budget because the budget's too high, or if we put a budget out and it gets voted down because it's too high, that doesn't get accomplished. It's not by a failure of the town council. It's not a goal that we can guarantee.
Well, I don't think we can guarantee, I mean, they're goals. Sometimes you do the best you can to try to meet them and you can't because of all the reasons you just listed. I don't, I don't personally object to having goals and saying these are our priorities. And some of them might not be achievable, but we could show our efforts towards achieving them. We can work towards achieving them.
So I guess then maybe.
Maybe, I think it's one of the words, so maybe we'll use words like advocate. Of capital equipment. I know we went on board yesterday and I saw some of those tracks, I'm like, whoa. So I think that we need to start, you know, yeah, maybe just, I think it's important to have it there, but we use a word like advocate. So you don't have to say we replace, we're responsible, we replace them every truck, because we all know budgets change. So is that a better word?
That was, that was actually what I was gonna say, the potential is advocate for replacement of capital equipment in a timely manner in accordance with the equipment replacement schedules so that, you know, if we have that desire to really look into it, dig in, know what the numbers are, look at the data and say, okay, what's, how long has it been there? What's the condition? Why isn't that condition? It really helps us drive a decision that when it goes to the budget, we actually say, we presented this to the public and that we advocated for, you know, and it's up to us to make that case when it goes to our front of the bed. Yes, this is a part of the budget, this is why there's a increase in this or a change in that, because we advocated for it, or that's a special one we can reapply.
I think that's better. I think that's, that's more our role. We can't say replace, but we can advocate for it. And I think we should challenge ourselves too, to understand what's on that list, not just seeing it on paper, but going and understanding why, where they are. So when somebody says, you know, Public Works wants to replace a car every five years and, you know, blah, 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 this is why. And it's not just us saying so-and-so said, and here it is on paper, but it's us being intimately involved with the list, understanding it, and being able to advocate for it. And advocating for it is something we can say is a goal for ours, rather than actually saying replacing it.
And it would also be measurable, because we would have two budget cycles in which we would, after you, it's okay, well, did we advocate for it? How did it go? Did the budget pass, obviously, or did it ever didn't? And we had to go back for a second round. Did we reduce anything from the capital budget to offset those changes? I mean, there's all the contingencies, but that's when we can look back and say, well, last budget you advocated for this, did you put it in or did it pass? If not, okay, second time around. And then as you get to that second round of review, which I think was at the bottom of the page in terms of setting review timelines, then we can look back on those goals and say, okay, how did we perform?
Advocate and educate, that's our role, right?
Yeah. Is that good for, for notes in that first one, so for you?
Advocate capital equipment in a timely manner in accordance with capital equipment replacement schedules. Okay. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that.
So then the second one is complete the town manager search process. Yeah, I think that one is, is a goal. I think we want to, the last time around, it took, it went two rounds with SGR before we hired him, and obviously it was still passed within a term, but there can be complications. Hopefully this time around we'll get it done efficiently, but I think that's a key focus for us. So if no one is against that, I think that's good as is. There you go. Alright, so C, provide succession planning and employee retention in a fiscally cognizant way.
So again, I'm going to be this particular, how do we provide the best? Do we want, we support creating a succession plan? Like, to me, succession planning and employee retention are two totally different things. And to provide succession planning, or are we going to create, work with the town to create a succession plan, because we don't do the succession plan.
That, that's, that's exactly what I was gonna say, is that, you know, it's something that the department heads and that the town manager and personnel, that they're the ones that are responsible for that succession planning, that will support the succession planning as well as examine opportunities for employee retention. I think that's something, those are things that we can do when we're doing it, when we're setting our goals. I think it's, again, it's something that's measurable, but it's something, but that's within our purview, because we can't provide for the plan, but we can support it and, and work with people that are developing that succession plan.
So perhaps then it would be collaborating with the town manager and their staff to implement successful succession planning and employee retention strategies in a fiscally cognizant way? So that maybe we're working with them to make sure that, as we're working together, we're providing a framework that they can build us, you know, a team within each department that has succession planning in mind and also, you know, maintains morale and has other areas of retention for employees.
Do we want that under some kind of staffing instead? Because, again, they're two, they're two different things. To say, you know, we're gonna, I don't know the word I want to put in front of it, but support or help or whatever with the succession planning. And then another one is to focus on employee retention, because succession means they're going away and retention means they're staying. So it's two different things in one goal. And I think, I think that they're different. And like, again, with what Lou was saying. How do we help develop, how do we help the town develop good succession planning for our staffing? So we have the same, we're transferring knowledge and et cetera, et cetera. And then how do we address which, employee retention is hard, because everywhere people are leaving, across the board. So that one's going to be a little hard to kind of narrow in on, but create something to understand employees' issues or whatever, to enhance retention.
Or maybe promote or support employee retention fiscally cognizant way. I think that that's something that's within our ability, that it's something we can do, could buy based upon the budget, based upon a review of it, you know, that I think that's something that we can do, where if it's taking a look at some, at the benefits, at the benefit packages that we pay, those types of things, examine those and as employee retention, but doing it again in a fiscally responsible way. So I think that that's something we're breaking that off to a second, like, to another subsection and say, support employee retention in a fiscally cognitive way. I think that's something that, that's within our purview.
How do we measure fiscally cognizant in this context?
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that I think it's a matter of taking a look at what's being proposed and it all comes down to, I mean, some of the others, some of the other goals that we have down further on down the line, looking at the services and seeing what the service needs are, what the service desires are, and comparing that to what's being requested, where for employee retention, it's something that, you know, the employee union comes back and asks for a 15% raise, we're not going to be able to do that. But if we can do it and we can examine things in a certain way and take a look at certain things, there may be some ability for us to work, but, you know, it's a matter of, that's, that's where the fiscally cognizant way is. Taking a look at what we can afford, taking a look at what's being requested and seeing if it's something that's compatible.
I see what you're saying, Katie, because fiscally cognizant to you might be a totally different thing to me. Yep.
So how do we? I mean, well, I was thinking to look at employee retention efforts within the larger, you know, full town budget. I mean, it's, it's part of a bigger process. And to keep perspective on what that, what that contribution gives to the full town efforts.
I'm not sure that this is something that the town council gets involved in. I think what we can do as a council is to make sure that a succession plan is top of mind for the town manager. And how do we do that? I think that's through communication and maybe it's through the budget process as well, communicating during the budget process that, listen, we need to keep in mind that we need a succession plan, because we have some people that are probably pretty close to retirement, right? Some higher level department heads are probably closer to retirement. So I think as we discuss this upcoming budget, that's what I think we can do, is just make sure that that's top of mind for town manager, finance director, as they're crafting this budget. That's, that's what I think our role is. I don't think we need to, or me personally, I can't, I can't, you know, talk to department heads and say, listen, you need to start developing somebody that's going to take your place. That's not my role, right? So I think, you know, expanding and kind of what Lou says, this is something that we can handle during the budget process and make sure that, that the town manager keeps it top of mind. That's, that's kind of what I see our role as.
That's true, because if we say we're doing anything with succession planning, we're not, we can't. It falls back on Lisa and then the town manager to develop a succession plan within the staff. That's the role of the staff to do that. So if we want succession planning to be one of our goals, then we need to find a way to write something that is relevant to what we have control and impact over.
I was just gonna add, is there a way, like, at the U time, that the town manager writes, what would it look like if something was to happen to me? I mean, can that be part of, you know what I mean? There's something as backup, like, if something, if it happens to somebody.
If I get hit by a bus.
Right.
I say it all the time. There's buses. I'm looking for one.
But I mean, at least you're like, okay, I can go to this whatever book and be like, all right, this is what I need to do. If there was an emergency, I just even think of backup plan, just a plan like this, but a backup plan if something was to happen.
I think that that's what they would all have to discuss.
Yeah.
But that takes us, again, that's not, that's not the council's role to do that, so.
Yeah, I think that comes down to asking questions during the budget process of the town manager. What are you, what are you thinking as far as succession planning goes? What, have you spoken to anybody? Have you talked about it? Is there anybody in development? Because you remember Chief Lightell last night said there's a gap. They had, and Assistant Chief Doge said, we have the old fogies here, and then we have a big gap, and then we have the younger guys. So to me, that's something that needs to be addressed fairly quickly. And that's, that's not our role. That's not how I see it. I see that as town manager's role, Chief Lightell's role, to do that. And, but we can keep it top of mind. That's, that's where I see our role is.
So I guess then, kind of having, please go ahead.
No, I don't want to interrupt your thought.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at least kind of reading the room, maybe press, item C is not an ideal goal to have and that a lot of it falls under the cognizance of the manager, the head of HR and their directors. However, we could internally say, you know, as a part of our town manager review process on an annual basis, you know, request information regarding retention and succession planning and seeing that farther view in terms of how we, how we evaluate them as a council. So I wonder that if that, you know, that's always my perspective, at least hearing people, is that it seems like this is a very gray goal to make and that it's not quite within our cognizance.
I like it though. Like, I like the idea of the fact that the council should understand the risks that the town has with massive retirements. We should know from a staffing perspective where we potentially have holes. I'm just struggling with what do we as a council have control over? What can we do to?
What about, I'm sorry, what about review and consider succession planning and employee retention in budget development? That way we're making a commitment to look at the town manager's succession planning and employee retention plans as we consider the budget.
Yeah, that kind of lines up with what I was saying, I think.
Yeah. What, what I was going to say was sort of along those lines, whereas maybe to at least as the higher level decision makers, when it comes time to the budget, maybe to at least support any initiatives that the town manager and staff may present or support, at least considering them. I'm not saying you'd support anything, because there, you have fiscally cognizant issues that you have to deal with. But maybe the goal of to commit to review and possibly support initiatives that may be presented by the town manager for succession planning and employee retentions plans.
I think along those same lines, if I may, I think, discuss and review succession planning and employee retention with town manager during budget process.
Yeah, I think that sounds a lot more measurable.
I'm trying to tell you, Katie said it, then you said it, and we both said the same thing.
So let me, if we have some agreed upon language, I can write it down.
Yeah.
Discuss. And review. Succession. Employee succession. And. Initiatives. Initiatives for employee retention.
He just put discuss and review. Discuss and review succession planning and employee retention during the business, the budget.
With the town manager during the budget process. How it works.
I think, Katie, that's pretty much what you said, too, right?
It's a softball over here.
It is, I agree.
That's an easy one.
Got to have something like.
Succession plan and employee retention and employee retention with the town manager. Yeah, during the budget process.
Alright, so then moving on to the successful use of ARPA funds, possibly use, uses for capital infrastructure needs, response and recovery to the pandemic.
That was just the words I wrote down when they were said. I think this is an important one. This is a goal that we should be able to kind of put some firm wording around, because it expires in 2024. It'll be here through our entire term. So I would say, with this one here, I think we should try to be a little specific with it, so we can measure what we're doing. So. Utilize and balance the ARPA funding for.
Capital infrastructure needs, response and recovery to the pandemic? Just if you take that initially, your section, break, break it into, or compile it, condense it to one sentence versus two separate ones.
So in two years, when we look at this goal and we're evaluating what we did, you may define success one way, I may define it another way, and we may not come to an agreement as to what success looks like.
Yeah, I don't think you can say success, because again, it's variable. I think we have to remember, everything that gets spent with ARPA comes from the subcommittee to the town council.
Right.
To approve. Everybody here will be approving or denying every use of the ARPA money. So we'll know exactly what every dollar was spent on. We won't necessarily know if it was successful long-term, but we will all have ownership of what those dollars.
Executing and approving the funds provided through our zone for capital infrastructure needs, response and recovery to the pandemic.
Where's the recording?
Execute. You had a good word there, Steve.
Yeah. I think execute, establish use of the ARPA funds. I think it might be established.
Use of the ARPA funds.
Recovery for the pandemic.
I think switch those two around, say, establish and execute.
Yeah, maybe, that's why I said, the first one left me faster.
Well, I had a thought in my head, and it just. Establish. Maybe identify. Identify uses.
I like that. That's what the subcommittee is doing, right?
For the, and yes, but that's still part of the council.
So identify.
Identify uses. Funds and.
Or. Identify use of the ARPA funds to benefit the town through capital infrastructure.
We want to do more than just identify uses.
Right.
Yeah, identify and, you know, execute use of the ARPA funds for capital infrastructure needs, response and recovery to the pandemic.
I think that's, I think that's a good way to put it.
And we'll be updated, well, by two years.
Yeah.
Where we're at to make sure.
Yep, identify and execute, this is what I got here to make that, I got this right, guys. Identify and execute use of the ARPA funds for capital infrastructure needs, response and recovery to the pandemic.
No, that's what I had in my, my notes.
And I think that that's something that, I mean, as Colleen said, it's something that we can, that, that we can update and then we can review. I mean, as, as the subcommittee comes forward with the recommendations, I mean, that's something that we're all going to have an open discussion on. Headlines that, and set certain milestones while we're discussing it as far as what the expectations are if we're going to do this project, so.
And it's one that we can, on an annual basis, go back to the manager and say, okay, do we have a compiled list of every expense that was approved by the council? Say, okay, this is what we spent, so this is what's, you know, left in the thought, in that ARPA grant and what we have left to consider, so.
Treasury requires that.
Yeah.
And that's, okay, can I just read back?
Yeah.
Identify and execute use of ARPA funds for capital infrastructure needs and response and recovery to the pandemic.
That sounds right.
Would you put that semi-colon?
So then E is maintain AAA bond rating status.
This one was mine.
Yeah.
And I don't think I got much traction with it. But I still think it's important. I'm still going to advocate for it. But that may fall under finance director, town manager purview in respect that since your, your time as, as the finance director, we've had that AAA bond rating the entire time, right? And I think that's a badge of honor for the town, for you.
I came here, we were AA two, I think.
Yeah.
And that's important to our fiscal, that's important to our fiscal.
It affects everybody in town.
It does. It affects everybody, our bond rating and our interest payments.
So I think that the best way to put it is, it's within our purview that we, we ourselves cannot maintain the AAA bond rating, but promote, promote spending in a manner that works towards maintaining our AAA bond rating status. That's something that's within our purview. We can perform budgets that are appropriate, you know, whether or not, again, a lot of it I know is contingent upon, you know, with the budget, it's got to pass through voting. But if we can at least promote it and prepare budgets that we, that we feel that would be, would go forward with this. We may not be able to ultimately ratify it, but that's something that we can, that within our purview, we do.
So I think the important thing here is, Lisa, I'm pretty familiar with how we maintain our, our bond status, right? So we have to have a solid budget, reasonable increases, we have to have a strong fiscal plan, a payment plan. We can't have too high debt ratio. There's multiple factors that go into that, right?
There's a lot. There's not only money, I mean, there. There's a lot, there's not only money, I mean, they're, they look at your reserves. How you're prepared for a disaster, how you're prepared for any sort of emergency. They look at your economic development, which we are weak, but we've been very fortunate. To have other areas that we were stronger in that pulled us through to keep the triple A rating. I think the goal is a good one, I think maybe to clarify it more is to maybe say. Something along the lines. Again, it would be more like support various initiatives with economic development. Or no, I don't want to say that, but support various initiatives. Or consider and support various initiatives in to. Maintain strong reserves, good, continue with good financial management of the town. To support economic development where possible. And to keep strong reserves.
Some goals within, I mean, those are all components of this goal, so do they need to be explicitly stated?
No, I. You don't, because that's how you can, that would be an activity. What you can say is support various.
It's all pretty fiscal.
Initiatives to maintain a triple A.
I guess that's the thing, like support, so. Because it's, it's the general fund balance, it's budgets, it's all of these different things, right, to maintain that. To maintain that, and you're right, a lot of those things are all checkpoints underneath activities.
We want to support fiscal policy that would, that would work to maintain. Triple A bond rating status, and then underneath there, we could have the operationals. However you refer to it.
Yeah, and actually, you wouldn't have to have that, that would be up to. The finance staff, the department heads to make sure that what we do, we continue to keep doing it.
So it's a fiscal policies that maintain. Policy that, you just said policy that maintains triple A.
What did I say?
Fiscal policies. Promote fiscal policies that maintain.
Designed to maintain.
Aren't designed, because I'm wordy, to maintain. Now you do, though you don't, you're. Maintain the town's triple A bonding rating status. He likes the words, they call me wordy, he just threw a bunch in there that are extreme.
Just maintain the triple A status. I'm just kidding.
Why say with one word when you can say with five?
That's what they do, because they try to keep you confused.
Through Councilor Luba's wordsmith thing, we're maintaining your goal, we just, we reworded in a way that still commits to the notion that we want to maintain.
This is what I got done, promote fiscal policies that are designed to maintain the town's triple A bond rate itself.
It sounds good, I like that.
So then, if that's good with everyone, move on to item F. Review community services, which has three subsections, the first being prioritizing review how they are delivered, consider private or regional partnerships if feasible.
So. So how do we end it?
I think that prioritizing it, that it's sort of. We do that as part of our budget process, that it's something that that's how we prioritize it, because then based upon. The needs and the funding, that sort of sets our priorities.
And then maybe instead of consider, I would probably, it was an actionable term, explore private or regional partnerships if feasible. So that, that means that we're kind of asking town staff to, to consider. Where there are possible private or regional partnerships.
And we also look like, one of the things that Mike was working on that we had pretty much had approval on before COVID hit. Was that, I think it was the cost grant, that they were going to be doing a review of the board of ed and the town to look for where areas where we could consolidate. Back office stuff and save money, so I would say that it's not even just. Private or regional partnerships, but it's also continued.
Private, private, regional or inter, I would say, intergovernmental is the right term for that, but that's probably a phrase that would be applicable to say. Or internal, yeah, there you go, I mean, we have had in the past the shared services committee. That was utilized for certain contracts and. And programs, so.
Prioritize and review how. Services are delivered.
I don't understand what we're doing.
That, I think, I think that was Brenda's, and I think where she was going with that had to do with the whole. What the community wants and the vision being redone. So it would be to try to find out what services do, does the community still want or need? Or. Don't want, and then prioritize them at that point and go forward from there, I think that's what. She was thinking about.
So nobody don't want nothing to change, but I guess that there, I think we would need to kind of refine that then because. Prioritizing the review how they're delivered, I don't know what actions that we take to do that other than.
See that, that would be more managerial.
Yeah, because you're, because that's you reviewing how human services, senior center, however, community-based services library. Deliver their services and programs to the public.
Right, and if as counselors, Colleen might have somebody say something to her, and Sandy might have something, say something to him, I'm going to have somebody say something different to me. We can't, you know, it's, that's not a, that's not a good way.
No, but one of the things you might want to consider here is maybe. To determine. If the services that are being provided. Are what the citizens want, but the problem is, the majority that we do here in the town, a majority of it is all mandated. You have your town clerk's office, you have your tax office, you have your assessors. And we do look at streamlining and doing, using software, things like that to try to make things more efficient. But. Those services you really can't do away with. And if the citizens want more services. Then, you know, certainly the support financially would have to be there, or then at that point. What services go away? The, the problem is, there's not a heck of a lot of services that can go away.
Right, if garbage goes away, you know, you still have to pay for it, it's just not coming out of your taxes, it's coming out of your paycheck.
You have police protection, you have. Fire protection, ambulance, you know, different public safety, you have, your streets are plowed. I don't think anyone that would say, don't plow my streets. They might say, I want you to come quicker, and if you do, then that means that you have to support the funding behind it. If you certainly support that desire, then. Then the funding has to come.
But that's why I think also the prior, prioritize review comes into play there. I think that's something where we take a look at that, we listen to what's going on, we listen to the department heads, and then it ultimately comes up to us to prioritize. To say, okay, well, yes, you know, like we have over the past two years where it's on purchasing. Okay, you know, we understand that, that republic works, you guys need these lawnmowers. We can't do them this year, that's our decision, that's a prioritization when we put that off, and then we, and then we take a look at the services. This is something where we need to do this first, we need to take care of this parking lot first before we worry about doing the lawnmower. So I think that's something that, you know, I think, you know, this is one time where I actually think it says everything, I think it's actually. Is, is pretty accurate as far as what we should be doing, we prioritize review other, maybe not, well, how they are delivered, but. Prioritize and review services, consider private or regional partnerships if feasible, private, reasonable, private. Regional or internal partnerships if feasible.
Okay, I agree, I think if we take out how they're delivered and just put prioritize.
Prioritize services.
Prioritize and review services.
Prioritize and review services.
Consider partner or regional partnerships if feasible, and maybe there's an extra line that is review the. Or opportunities for shared services within the town.
There can be like a quarterly thing where. You know, it's an agenda item, and it's something for discussion, how do you think that might work?
Some of it comes out of like the town managers report, we look at, at reports of department heads. And I think some of it comes when we make budget decisions.
I mean, I think it's something that's ongoing, where, you know, if we see something, if Lisa, you know, the town manager identifies. An issue, that's something that we would then be able to say, okay, well, look, let's make this, let's make this an action item on the next. On the next agenda, well, same with department heads or other things like that, so I think that's something that, again, we can. We can show that we're reviewing it, if there's something that's actionable, that's great, if it's something that we decide. It's that there's no need for action on it, that shows in our budget decisions, so.
My fear is that something like, something like this gets, we all agree to it and then we never look at it again. That's kind of what I think could potentially happen with something like this.
Yeah, I think that's where, at least for the process notes, we firstly, I think, setting review timelines, I think that's where if we go to that section, we can establish. A month or a date, either on an annual basis or even a bi-annual basis, like every six months, say, you know. You know, do we want to have a meeting, agenda item where we just go through the goals? Say, are there, and then ask the town manager and town staff, are there any highlighted goals that we've accomplished or that need additional discussion?
Oh, definitely, you should be, should be doing that.
Yeah, I think that that's, that's where you have the, the poll and the projected outcomes and achievements and milestones. Where you have the timeline and you sort of set yourself, where we don't have to have it necessarily in the goals here. It doesn't have, because that's something that we would develop after we set the goals, after we set everything else, and we work with the department heads and sort of say, okay. When, when can we establish this, what is a realistic guideline? We may not, we may say, we want to do this within six months, and you have the department head come back and say, yeah, there's no way you're going to get it done. So I think it's something that, after we set the goals here, when we're talking about our, about. The planning with the department heads and other things, that we can then say, okay, in accordance with this goal that we have set. And in accordance with your proposals of what you want, if you want to see inside the budget. Let's set a guideline, let's set, let's set like, you know, milestones, when can we accomplish this, like we did with the firehouse. The firehouse, I think, is a prime example of saying that we're, this is when we want to have, we have to have this done, we have to have the assessment done by this day. We have to have this done by this day, there's set milestones or set achievements, and I think that's something that we can go forward with after we've set all these down.
So, so point of, point of, point of question on here. Maybe it's because this, John, you're with me on this, maybe it's because it won't reach that far. Maybe because this is my fifth year on the council here, but I feel like personally. I have gone through the tours that you have twice, I have seen all this stuff, and I still have to. I don't want to say argue, but argue with residents about everything that's on our capital plan, all the time. Like, you know, I'm getting questions about this, or that, this, and that, all over the place, and I guess I'm wondering where we can review and prioritize. To me, the services is all the different departments, we can consider private partnerships and all of that, but when we're looking at the needs and we're talking about capital on that. I don't know where it fits in here, how do we get the public to see what. John and I, you know, five years, we've seen every year for the last five years, and I don't know where that kind of plays into this, but. That's, I think, the piece that we're missing is, it's important that the council understands all this, and that the council is. Understanding the services that we provide and how they're delivered. And that we're looking at private regional partnerships and we're looking at back office stuff like that, but. How do we get the, where would it come into play on getting the public support for this stuff? Does that become part of it?
I mean, I think that's part of our budget process as well.
Well, I would argue that you know as well as I know, three years, how many people actually come to this?
Steve tried several different techniques over the years.
I know.
He was here, he tried to have like roundtable discussions, you know, neighborhood workshop. And then, you know, meet over at the fire training center to discuss different things in the budget, to try to educate. The citizens and it, no matter what he did, it wasn't a big turnout.
I mean, the, the. I'm trying to think of hardest.
I'm struggling with this whole goal.
Yeah.
I'm really am, because it's, it's borderlining, almost micromanaging, and I don't mean that in a disrespectful way. But. I, I know. You have to hear from the citizens, the goal, this goal was written around, let's hear what the citizens want. And that's kind of where that stemmed from, and I'm struggling with the language around it. I, I think.
I'm sorry.
My head is all over the place, I think the idea is to try to determine. What's, what does the public want?
For services.
I think that's what it was, so at that point, yes, you would, you would hear what the public would want, and then. You would look at it and determine what would be feasible, what would, you know, what would you prioritize as far as. What the public wants, you have your mandated things, you have your. Things that are important, and then you have your nice to haves, and you hardly ever get to the nice to haves when you're, you're trying to get. To the two top things.
But, but I think that, you know, in putting in perspective of the budget discussion, the budget process, we hear from our residents. That, I mean, that's a one time where we definitely hear from people, is during the budget process. Good, bad, and indifferent, and so by the input that we get during that budget process, that's where we can then set our priorities. And so that's why I think that that's where that all comes into play, where to create a separate. Review process is something that I think is incredibly onerous, and really, you know, as you said, doesn't bear fruit. You know, to create a separate process, but during the budget process and listening to that and giving, getting the input from, from our residents. That's where we can then say, based upon the input we receive, that this is what we feel are the priorities for the services. Based upon how we're looking at the budget, if people, enough people come forward and say, you know, we want this. You know, we want, we want the turf field. All right, well, you want the turf field, well, then you understand that this is going to, that we've got to make some trade-offs in the budget in certain areas. And for anyone watching and for the record, I'm not, I'm just using this for demonstrative purposes, do not kill me for mentioning that. Because I've already gotten.
Well, you may not have trade-offs, you may increase the budget. Yeah, that's true, it is a trade-off, but.
So I feel like I'm on the merry-go-round again, and this is like you said, because like I go back. I go back to, again, quite a few years ago, excuse me, I just nailed someone. Well, Steve created that. The document. That showed what every department did. Use me, holy moly.
There's some water and soda in the other room.
And it was showing how much of what everybody's person, personal job was mandated. And what services were linked to each department, and it was literally like, if we stop doing this, we'll save three thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars a year. Which isn't even a tenth of an FTE, you know, and I think part of this assumes that the town is. Unhappy with the services, which I don't think is a fair assessment to make. I don't think either way, it's like, it's fair to go, but I remember that process that Steve put that together, and I know he always took, because I asked him to update it once, and I thought he was going to. Hang me out the window by my tips of my ears, because he said it was a very onerous process to develop like. What every staff person was doing and how it linked to what services in town and what was mandated and what was not, what was something that we could quote unquote. Remove or cut. What was something that we could quote unquote, remove or cut and what that did to the budget? So I understand what you're saying from the micromanagement perspective, and I do think this came with the assumption that. The town is not meeting the needs. And I would say that there are always going to be some people that. Want more or don't want other things or want to trade off on this or that. The key is us trying to figure out. What those things are. And I don't see that as what we have up here. I do think that consider private regional partnerships. We do need to get what we can regionalize, wholeheartedly across the board. Where we can try to save money. We know we've got issues with trash pickup and every, a couple of other things, is there opportunities there, but. I guess I, I, I still just struggle on the realm of prioritizing.
Maybe review, maybe get rid of.
Services are deliver, like.
Yeah, I kind of feel like, at least reading that first, the two sentences, I think the review of shooting services. I think we're, if they were repeating the review sections, I feel like the second sentence is really where the action item that we're trying to undertake. In the process of reviewing community services. So I, I guess I would be in agreement. I don't think the first sentence is. And especially going to, not trying to jump ahead too much. But if we do that, if we put in a goal of a new strategic plan and create a new townwide vision, mission statements. I think that is where we would have the ability to prioritize and review services because we're getting. Resident input through forums and other forms of feedback. So I think that's, that's the action that we want to do, prioritize review services is the strategic plan and. Potentially creating a new townline vision, mission statement.
Maybe you just strike that.
I, I think so.
Can we get a concise, maybe this is a goal, we help to facilitate getting a concise list of all the services that the town provides.
So instead of the first sentence being inventorying. This, you know, community services, I mean, I think we already kind of do that in our budget.
It's in our budget book. I mean, each department, it, it, at the beginning of each department. It explains exactly what services they provide.
So that's an easy goal. Create a document that lists all of that.
Oh, you just read the budget book instead of making us do extra work.
People are intimidated by the budget, Lisa. I love the budget book.
Do not give us extra work to do. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please interrupt away. You brought chocolate and caramel and you can interrupt. Okay, so what about, I mean, we do a lot, not we, but the town and the other part, it's a lot of service. But I know that only a few hundred, but still give you maybe a little idea. Of what might be, I'm assuming most people don't. Two that we've got to, I think we already know, but, or another thing of what, I don't know. Is on their minds, like what issue, yeah, I mean, I think those are two different things, but maybe we start helping us decide. What could be, what we should focus on, that makes sense. I think.
You know, I was gonna say, I think that that's, we, I mean, skipping ahead, where we have that goal number, I mean, section four. Where it says, create, engage, engage citizenry. I think that that's something that we could follow underneath that. I think that's a perfect spot to actually put that is. Where we're engaging them, we're getting, we're getting the pulse of our, of our residents. And I think that, I think that's.
Cool, the toolbox of that, yeah.
Number four, now it's on.
Yes, I think, I think, yeah, ultimately, strike the first sentence and maintain the second one of the exploring.
We're already doing.
Yes, exploring. Private regional, I'm good, thank you. Exploring private regional internal partnerships as feasible, if that makes sense, Lisa.
I'm sorry, I heard explore private.
Yeah, exploring private regional.
Were feasible.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and then for the second one, addressing public safety needs by department staffing. So I mean, obviously, we did pass, well. You don't, you know, you don't have a grant.
Yeah.
In our hand yet, so I think. Maybe addressing ongoing public safety needs and then kind of, as, as we're going through the process of the.
Or evaluate, instead of address, evaluate the public's. Safety needs. And if we don't get the grant, then we need to evaluate, what does John absolutely positively mean? Rather than this grant says we need to hire three people.
Right, evaluate.
Yeah, evaluate public safety needs and then, yeah, fire department staffing. And then three possible new.
Can we not limit it to fire departments?
I was gonna say.
Public safety, yeah.
Just, I wouldn't even. Building inspection.
Yeah.
Yes, fire health department. You have different things that really, even though it's not under that budget.
Yep.
That are public safety and things.
That's true.
Yep. So then, subsection three, possible new strategic plan to create a new townwide vision, mission statement. Then in brackets, has possibly once a new town manager is hired and. Share with SGRs a possible project for the town manager pamphlet. So I think a lot of the background is already there in terms of my support of that goal. And I think that provides a great opportunity for the future town manager to really have something they can do. That will be actually part of their goals, their goals and possibilities. Is having the opportunity to really update. I was gonna say like outdated document, but certainly one that is, is dated and may not entirely reflect. Community input. It's been, what was it, thirteen years? Is that correct? It was twenty, two thousand eight.
There is two thousand eight.
So, you know, I think we, in essence, we probably revise the charter more frequently. Which is a very major document. I think this is, we should take this in a similar vein, that our vision and mission statements. Should be kind of a guiding document. The charter is kind of our infrastructure, how we carry out that vision, so.
Some of, some strategic planning was done when, when they worked on the plan of economic development. There certainly is a vision, mission, all that there and the public was questioned that they did pretty much. What we would call a strategic planning process focusing on economic development. Or not just economic development, but the plan of.
Yeah.
Yeah. For conservation, things like that. So. So some of that data is there, just. So you understand, when, when you set out to do this sort of initiative. The process is very time consuming, which I'm not afraid of. If, you know, and I would hope any manager that will come in would not be afraid to do that. But to do it right, you more than likely need a consultant who could be more of a mediator. Rather than your town manager being the mediator or a council member or a resident. You want someone who's kind of separate from the process.
Yeah.
To be able to pull it all together and to facilitate it. So something like that could cost anywhere between ten, twenty thousand dollars. Now, it depends on how deep you go. Could be as low as ten, it could be higher.
Develop the mission and vision, hire a consultant to do that?
To do a whole strategic planning process. And to, yes, to do a vision and a mission, that's. That's usually how it's done. What you're doing, when you're developing the vision, which you usually do first. You're bringing in the public, you're bringing in the employees, you're bringing in the town council, you're bringing in boards, commissions. Anybody who could be affected. Business owners in town. You're bringing them all together and they're basically brainstorming from different ways. And the consultant usually tries to facilitate that whole process. It's very involved. But if you want it done. The appropriate way, that's, that's how you have to do it. Now, I'm not telling you, you have to do it that way. I'm just saying. If you take it on. Then I think we have to decide what way and, and how would you want to support? That, would you support the funding? If you want to put this as a vision or mission and you want to go that route. Then are you willing to support the funds that it would take? To make that happen? If you want to do it a different way, then are you willing to accept that it may not be as. A quality that you would get by doing it through the whole process of having someone be able to coordinate it all.
I, I'm just thinking that it's somebody from the outside who you, you say has no connection to town. I don't know if they can sort of bring to the table somebody that is intimately involved with the town. You know, and but. I guess I can see the argument because somebody who's, who lives in town and has a vested interest in town, may have their own opinions about certain things. I, I don't know, I, I.
It also, it also helps to have. Someone who's considered and seen as impartial when facilitating discussions with residents or boards. Where there are differing points of view that need to be discussed and considered. It, this process, we, in my experience, Lisa's right, that the, the standard, the acceptable standard for this is to bring in. A consultant to do it.
Okay, well, we're not citing that tonight anyway, so.
Well, deciding whether or not you want that as a goal, though. So we are in a sense. And if, if you.
Well, there's more than one way to do it, though.
Yeah, so I've been kind of like, working around in my head, there's a tiny, pared down with that goal is though. At least for me, it's facilitating conversations and taking steps towards creating a strategic plan, a renewed townwide vision and mission statement. So we're facilitating those conversations that we at least want to see what the likelihood is, what. The costs, what the process would be like. I think, I think this is a very high level goal, so we need to, if we put it in this. List, then we'd have the meetings where we'd have more of a deep dive of, is it feasible, is it possible, is it within our time? Limits as a, as a council for our term. So I think it creates that measurable and, and kind of urgency to go through that process.
And I think it's.
And it doesn't commit us to, sorry, I'm.
No.
As I say, it doesn't commit us to saying, you know, we're absolutely gonna do it, we're gonna have the conversation about whether or not it's. Feasible or it's within our term to do so.
So, so my only, my only issue with, my only concern, question, comment, whatever on this one. Is strategic plan is like one of the new punch words. So define that. I understand the vision and the mission, right? I understand if we want to come, have somebody come in to develop a new vision and a mission. I get that, but when I ask other people, define what you're looking for in a strategic plan, not a single person gives me the same answer. And it's not, you know, what exactly, like you said, P O C D. It was more than ten thousand dollars to bring in those people to do a full P O C D, to do ambition and a vision and a. And the plan for the P O C D. So I guess I don't understand what strategic plan means in this context. For the town on top of the P O C D and all the other stuff. We have, what exactly are we trying to establish? What are we trying to strategically plan?
Are you asking me?
I, well, that, I, no. I think. I'm gonna come at it from a different point, but I'm, I'm trying to express how I think this. How, how I would answer this question. I think we might want to consider turning this a little bit and talking about. Once a new town manager is hired. Talk about collaborating on the vision and goals for the town. Considering a strategic plan, including explicitly. Developing what, what does that mean? You know, we have to identify, as you say, what it really means to have a strategic plan. But I think what Steve was saying about having this be part of the new town manager. One of the first things a new town manager might take on has a lot of benefit. First of all, it, it's some immediate buy-in, right, to our community and to how we're. What we're doing here, right? What is the, what is the town council doing? What are all the various boards doing? And it also allows for them to really put, make a contribution right from the get-go. And part of that, we, we know that a viable or reasonable expectation is. In onboarding a new town manager is getting them familiar with our community. And this is, this goes hand in hand. Right? As the town manager is becoming more familiar with our community, they are going to inherently talk about or think about. What are we doing here? Where do we want this to go? And I, I think it blends in well with bringing in a new town manager and. Working together with that person to ensure. That we can establish things right from the get-go. So would you then, I like that, would you then say, would this make more sense to go underneath? Like the town manager, because when the town manager comes in, basically, you should be saying, kind of like we did with Mike, is you need to go and understand what the boards and Christians are doing. Understand what everybody's, and then pull it together to say, Talon, this is what Talon needs to do. This is where we need to go. This is what we need. I, I, I see this as separate than vision and mission. For me, like to me, if, if that's how we're defining strategic plan here, I see that as, like you said, new town manager comes in. What's your five-year plan?
Yep.
You know, what's the five-year plan? Where are we going from here to what we ultimately want, which is Talon with a what, better tech space? Whether this, whether that, et cetera, et cetera, A to Z, how do we get there, kind of thing? So does that maybe then go under?
So then create.
A town manager deliverable?
So possibly under, I'm assuming just reading the list, would it fall under B in terms of clean the town manager search process, then creating a subsection there? That says facilitate conversations and take steps towards creating strategic plan. And then as a separate sentence under. Under subsection three of review community services. We renew a town, we renew the townwide vision and mission statements. And that's just its own activity.
Renew or review.
Sure, yeah.
So maybe under the town manager, then our goal would be to support the town manager creating a strategic plan. For Talon, kind of, that's not the best wording, but you know what I mean, like under the town manager, support the town, the new town manager. Doing that. And then under this one, like you said, I don't know if we want to say we're gonna create it, because I don't know if we can, like. If we would have, we have to have the conversation, like Lisa said, if we're gonna put money in the budget to, to do a townwide vision and mission statement. And even that, I would say, is contingent on town manager, right? We don't want to do that without the input of a town manager, so. Maybe that's a subsection of town manager also. But that's, that's not necessarily like the review of community services. Maybe we just move that whole thing and kind of reword it up to. Once we have the new town manager position locked, then this is what. And it could be just considered developing or consider updating.
Yep.
The vision and mission statement in collaboration with the town manager. That maybe in our conversations with the town manager, we say, hey, it's good as it is. But at least we've gone through the review process. Yeah. I think I like that better.
All right, so in that case, then striking. Item or subsection three of section F and then putting a new subsection of the B saying. Support the new town manager towards creating a strategic plan and consider updating the mission and vision statement. That sound agreeable to everyone?
Yep.
Support the new town manager.
Towards creating a strategic plan. And consider updating the mission and vision statement. Or just updating Talon's mission, just so it's clear that what, what mission and vision statement, what it sounds.
And, I'm sorry, strategic plan and.
And consider updating Talon's mis- mission and vision statement.
One second. I'm, I'm just thinking here.
We like thinking. Don't listen to the elephant in the corner, ignore the elephant.
I want to make a statement, maybe we can pull something out of here. The town manager. Would not create a strategic plan. The town manager may assist in collaborating with everyone who's involved. In working on a strategic plan. To, to be able to set your goals and your objectives and exactly the explicit activities. But you do that in concert with. The stakeholders.
So it's a.
So the town manager may not. Create the plan by him or herself. Do you understand?
Yeah, so I was writing down.
So.
Yeah, quick act of, you have to collaborate.
So. So that in collaborating. To create, to create, to collaborating with various stakeholders to create a strategic plan or something.
Work with the new town manager, work with the uh, so I said, support the new town manager, so work with the town manager, work with the new town manager.
Support new town manager towards collaborating with stakeholders.
And not just towards developing a strategic, a strategic plan. And the town manager is leading that process. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the town manager would actually create create it by themselves.
Right, because you wouldn't want your town manager saying, well, guess what? I'm gonna have a fully funded police department and I'm not gonna do state troopers.
Right.
You don't want the town manager to be saying, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
And a strategic plan is kind of setting those goals, you want to have everybody who's involved, especially you, because you guys. And ladies are the decision makers, so that's where I'm I'm trying to play with the words a little bit, you don't want to have the town manager. Creating it himself, but collaborating with the stakeholders in order to create a strategic plan. How's that?
So so let me see if I can develop a rewrite, so support the new town manager and various stakeholders towards developing a strategic plan. And consider updating Talon's mission and vision statement. Does that sound more, I'll say, a- agreeable, but does that, does that sound more appropriate? Because it's the council's action to support the town manager and various stakeholders, so that everyone's a part of the process, but. It's the council's action to to do that supporting.
Okay. Alright, well, he cut a few words out that I had, so support the new town manager and various stakeholders. In creating a new strategic plan. And consider updating Talon's vision and mission statements.
Yep, sounds good to me. Alright.
Sounds good. What I'm probably gonna do is type all this up.
Yeah, because I do want to make a note, I think from our agenda, there's no actual final. This, you know, decision, we have to vote to finalize this, you can have the second draft and then uh maybe our next council meeting or. But yeah.
Go on and get one done, right, so we vote.
Yeah, I think it would be good, I think similar to our last process, we kind of, we tried to get to the process and have a separate vote to finalize those goals. So I think this is a good second round of that, just want to make a quick point. So with that being said, we're on number two, so promote, promote sound infrastructure, which there are four subsections. So proper upkeep of facilities, completely stewed fire station improvements within two years. Town council to advocate at the state level on criminal foundation issues and town council to advocate at the state level to reduce well water concerns.
Please scroll, please. Oh, sure.
Tammy just likes having having the big screen's convenient, so it's coming further than this, yeah, for sure.
One of the things I want to say here is, I appreciate you letting me bring these back to the employees and and share them with them. Um and what I tried to do is where there was, you know, most they understood and.
Yeah.
They went along with, but some, sometimes they did share some of their concerns, so I tried to put what their concern was. With these various things for you to think about when making. Whatever decisions you go forward, they're not saying, don't do it, they're just saying, you know. There's some of the concerns we have with this particular goal. Some proper upkeep of facilities.
That one, I think, is is a nice intent, but pardon me, feels like that's a part of the capital plan, and that, you know, it's it's more of a routine maintenance. It is handled internally, you know, if it's if it's the highway garage, it's parks and, or public works, if it's, you know, the firehouses are being renovated. That's technically all the safety, it all ends up in the under the cognizance of a town budget, but I think.
Can we worry just be, I still think we should be responsible to make make sure that, I know it's part of the capital.
Yeah.
But I think. We could do a better job of it, to be honest.
So I think that.
It's part of, I think it's the first one, that we did on the first one, though.
Yeah, it came, it came from public, uh, the public and capital investment. It's a cap, it's a capital. So you probably want to change your first one um to include.
Well, it just, we just said capital investments on the first one, so.
Capital equipment. Advocate capital equipment in a timely manner and of course, well, maybe we move. That down under infra- or whatever, it would be basically the same thing, advocate to. Maintain. It's part of our infrastructure, our our trucks are infrastructure, our lawnmowers. So we can move, if that's okay with you, we can move that under in number A, under infrastructure. Um but maybe add to it. Capital equipment and infrastructure. And just do a proper upkeep of facilities, so infrastructure would be your.
Yeah, it's gonna be a catch-all service for for the facilities and. And I think if there's any way, at least in our budget discussions or even our capital budget discussions, that there is a general assessment of how are the buildings. And obviously, like the Parks and Rec building, they got the grant through STEEP that they're doing a lot of renovations and remodeling of that area. So that's gonna probably see a marked improvement in terms of quality and upkeep, but other areas may or may not. Or even, you know, facilities like the lodge, how is the lodge, you know, fairing, how are, you know, maybe our fields and grounds, you know, those those sorts of things are part of the infrastructure. It's about keep.
Lisa, can you read what you had again, so I can type it up? I have my own minutes, you should see all my, I have, listen, I search your things, shut up, open a shelf.
You you shouldn't do, just standing Robert's rules, so.
I have to be able to keyword search. Advocate to replace capital, equipment. And improvements. And required improvements. For infrastructure. In a timely manner. In accordance with the capital. Equipment replacement schedules, it would have to be capital.
Couldn't we just.
Capital plan. With with, in accordance with the capital plan.
Yeah, I think that's that's shorter and and more direct.
I would take out the first capital. Because the equipment schedules. Um all that are part of the capital.
Yeah.
And we include all that information.
Infrastructure in a timely manner.
And then that'll be. Alright, will we read it one more time?
Sure, one more time for the for the record.
Okay.
Lisa is nodding her head.
Advocate to replace capital equipment and required improvements for infrastructure in a timely manner. In accordance with the capital improvement plan.
I would take capital out before equipment, because it's already in there, sure place equipment and required improvements for infrastructure.
So then item B is completely stewed fire station improvements within two years, I think that's pretty straightforward, measurable. You know, it's obviously an ongoing process. You know, I think that's a goal that we can kind of stand on top of, and it holds us and public safety and various sound offices. Accountable towards, you know, what we passed at referendum, actually didn't carry it out. Because otherwise, the bond notes are, I mean, just remembering, but basically, they're sitting there until they get executed or established, right?
We've issued some notes because we plan on moving, but we didn't issue them all.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we will have to, we pay those notes next year and issue bonds or whatever we decide to do, that we have to issue notes again, or.
The town council to advocate at the state level on criminal foundation issues. I think that is pretty straightforward, I think maybe in terms of strategies, you know, if there are issues that come before the legislature. It might be worth discussions with the whole council, there's a support that either we want, the interim or the new town manager to advocate for on behalf of the council. Or joint letters from the entire council saying, you know, we're in support of this bill, because we are one of the hardest hit communities. Regarding criminal foundations and, you know, and and kind of lay out those reasons.
Fun fact, they just increased the level from one hundred and seventy-five thousand per home to one hundred and ninety thousand per home, starting in January.
That is good. Something that was pretty straightforward, uh, the town council to advocate at the state level to address well water concerns within Talon. I think that was also straightforward, one thing I think that might be of note is making sure the water commission is a stakeholder in that process. Possibly, because I believe in their bylaws, they actually have cognizance over any water issues in the entire community. So they 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 don't just manage the water system that is run by the town, but they actually are supposed to be kind of cognizant of any water issues in town.
I would agree with that, I would, as far as like the employee input here, I understand what's driving that, but I think to address. The state level to address the well water concerns is multifaceted, it's not just, it is all of it. Like dealing with legislation on what we're putting on the roads, you know, dealing with legislation on how we're testing these. How we're remediating it, to me, it's, that's the state level stuff, it's not whether or not we can bring water here, there, or anywhere else. That's our hopefully, like, our review of a solution for it, it's more just, this is an issue. A hundred and eighty-something contaminated wells in the state of Connecticut, Tom has sixty-eight. Of hundred eight, so I think it is incumbent upon us to advocate at the state level that we find some kind of solution for that. Whether it be something like the criminal foundations or anything else, so. Okay, well, I could definitely take out, I was just sharing what they said.
Yeah.
And and certainly going forward, those are the things to consider if. The situation arises. But just to be prepared that it could possibly.
Yeah.
Alright, so you you want to keep what it says here. Um I think the water commission is a separate, and and that we just.
Yeah.
We um, we included them in.
Other discussions, yeah.
Discussions.
Okay.
They they were not involved. In the beginning of what was going on, I wasn't involved in any of this until just recently. So.
Okay. But I think, is everyone okay with B before we want E?
And well, should probably be be a small W, right?
Yeah. So he has continued efforts with the historic district and people with disabilities commission to address ADA needs for accessibility. In or within the historic districts and any other areas of concern. I think that's pretty straightforward, I think there's still been ongoing discussions, events, they're advocating, I think that will continue to be. A part of the dialogue, so. So moving on to item.
I'm sorry, what are we referring to on me, uh, any other potential areas of concern? Is that regarding accessibility concerns?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay.
Well, but I think that that, putting it in perspective, as far as going to have discussions on, where it's certainly been in the historic district district. The difference, the green, and that whole, the whole area around there, so I think that's, I mean, I understand the concern, we're, are we looking at all the areas? But I think it's just a matter of staying in the the green area.
I think one is an example, would be. I think one area, I think is an example, perhaps anecdotally, would be celebrate Talon and accessibility in that space. For ADA needs, and I think other spaces, if we have events held in other parts of the town that aren't managed by the town, whether that's the school buildings, the fields. Those certain public spaces that we're continuing to address those areas.
There there's some that we are federally mandated to provide under the ADA laws, and. We may or may not be in compliance, I'm not saying either way, but if those should arise, where we're made aware of that. We are not in compliance, we are legally required to be in compliance. So that's where this goal would address any of those other potential areas, if there are any.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they need to be separated, because one is a very distinct issue that we're working on actively, we have been for a year and a half, and that's accessibility to the green. But for instance, we were talking about doing the other grants, I don't remember if we actually went through it or not, or if we were putting it on the next round of STEEP grants. But we were looking at increasing the accessibility to cross farms and up to the fields. And there was supposed to be, we were working on this safer grant to um, to have the parking lot. And accessible pathways up to those, those recreational. That is in the capital plan. Right, I think there's other things that we need to look at from ADA accessibility, not just here, that's just the one that we're actively engaged with. But um I do think we need to be cognizant and um make sure we understand the events that we're having. And the things that we're doing, that we are making sure that they're accessible to everybody, so I would almost advocate for that to be. Its own F.
Or maybe just accessibility being E with two subsections.
There you go, right, increasing, and you know, accessibility and then making those underneath this, that's a good idea. So just like as a as a label, accessibility?
Yeah, so yeah, accessibility and then, you know, subsection one would be. The town historic thing, the town historic districts, and then the second one would be other areas of. If any, if they had any other potential areas of concern. Because I mean, infrastructure wouldn't even, you know, follow them, the, it does follow the events, but it could even be things as simple as, you know. Is town hall, are the library, are, you know, the interiors of our structures, you know, within ADA compliance? Or are they accessible for people with needs beyond physical disabilities, or the cognitive, emotional, behavioral disabilities? That they have access to those services and can access the equipment that's available within those buildings. So that that might follow to those other areas of concern, envision to events and open spaces.
Or we just make them E and F, but rather than accessibility and one, two, I would just say E is. Continue efforts with historic district and people with disability commissions to address ADA needs for accessibility. In the historic district period. Um and then. Or do you? Review other access, review other potential areas of accessibility concern? Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
So yeah, F is, or yeah, F is review other areas of potential accessibility concern, and then there'd be a new subsection G. For explore, okay, no, maybe not.
No.
Sorry, I created an extra point for myself, I was already breaking it out, you were ahead of me. See, and I think that works.
So that it would be E and F.
Yep.
Wait, E and.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, E is a focus just on the historic district, and F is review other areas, yeah. Alright, so item three, promote sound recreational opportunities, A is create a long-term plan for the artificial turf field at Talon High School. And I think there's another, this is part of sound infrastructure, so in that case, do we, would we want that to be a subsection of? Of uh, or the section of that goal? Because I mean, sound recreational.
I struggled with that one, define sound recreational opportunity. Well, we're reviewing what the programs and the rep has, you know. Yeah, it would be, you know, to be able to support having certain, to have a recreation program. You know, don't, don't eliminate the recreation department, if you go as far as.
Well, yeah. Sorry, you know, I think I initially read that and thought it was a a note from, it was like a note concern that doesn't, does this fall under a specific section, so.
Oh, I I was just saying, um, this could fall under two different goals.
Yeah.
I think it belongs under infrastructure, because it's the turf field, it's infrastructure, it's not recreation, it's a school field. And we have the opportunity to use it for the things, but it's mainly a school field, and it's part of our infrastructure, it's part of our buildings, it's part of all the rest of it. I don't think it is specifically for sound recreational opportunity, I think this is part of our infrastructure.
Oh, not played out with advocate, what about though, I mean, we're in the discussions regarding the miracle.
Miracle field.
That would have come under accessibility.
Okay.
No, but it would, the intent for miracle field is that it is available for use for other groups, not just groups that need an accessible field.
So recreational opportunity.
So, I mean, so is that where we keep the recreation, whatever bullet that we want there? And have the turf field and then the miracle field included underneath there, since they do somewhat go hand in hand, or we want them both to go under. The infrastructure a- aspect of it, I mean, it's six of one, half done the other, I mean, we're sort of discussing it, it's just a matter of where. You know, I guess I'm looking for a. You know, I guess I'm looking for a, for a problem that already has a solution, so.
We already approved the miracle field though?
No, but we were, we're still in discussions.
As a goal, even though.
Well, not as a goal, but just to sort of examine the the feasibility. I think not a matter of. Building or doing it, but a matter of at least examining it before, you know, we commit to anything.
I think the main point of America field is is accessibility.
This is a specific item though. So I mean, we could also put down there to talk about a long term plan to buy the new fire truck or the. So I'm not sure that this needs to be a goal because this is gonna happen. This is getting the that turf, that artificial turf field. That is gonna be a discussion item and the decision is gonna be made in this term by this council on that field, right? So I don't know if that necessarily needs to be even part of this. Cause that's a specific item and there are other items that we're gonna have to make decisions on.
Yeah. And it can be, can fall under two A.
It is, exactly. It is a town. It's part of our our regular capital stuff. So.
In line with what you're saying, John, I think two A covers this.
You already have two to go.
I agree. I don't think it, I don't think we need it.
So then in that case for three, then are we, are we creating a separate breakout still for? Like an ongoing consideration of a proposed miracle field project because it's it's a recreational opportunity, or do we not want to have? Three at all in this create?
Time out.
Yes.
I'm reading minds. Well, when we met jointly with the Board of Education. One of their concerns was to make sure that we had a plan in place. And and certainly it does go under A to advocate on to replace things. But I think the the one vocalized concern was to make sure that we put a plan in place. To be able. If the council so chooses to put the artificial turf in. To be able to replace it and have a plan like a funding source put aside every year, or whatever that plan may be. They they wanted to see some sort of agreement or document. In place that was going to be a, um, that you'd be able to abide by and and support and and do. So I think that's where that goal is coming from.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I understand that, but the Board of Ed has their goals and and we have ours and and for me, this comes down to it's. It's part of our regular infrastructure. You know, we shouldn't have to create a separate plan.
I think you have to start this planning down the road. I think in like, I'm thinking like in ten years. Or might not be here, but like we, I don't know, but. We shouldn't be wondering how we're gonna fund the next. Field or whatever we're gonna decide on, right? So I think, is that what you're saying this idea like? From here, but we're trying to figure out now. We also have to be prepared for the future.
Any of your equipment or infrastructure should be considered that way and. Before Birch Grove hit. We were real close to making that happen. But now our debt plan kind of adjusted. We'll we'll be there in a few years to at least start putting pay as you go funds aside, if that's what the council chooses to do. Um, so yes, this is. That, but we really should be looking at how are we gonna continue to replace fire trucks? How are we gonna replace dump truck? And there should be some sort of revolving fund. That's sort of doing like depreciation each year and putting funds aside. Um, so that when it comes time to replace them, that's sort of what we do with the pool type vehicles, so. That the funds will be there to do it. So. You know, that.
And we can make this commitment to. The Board of Ed or to within our own group that. We are going to come up with a long term plan for that field without making it one of our goals.
Yeah. It's it's no different than, it's no different than when we, when we've committed to the fire department stuff or looking at. Reviewing the fire department or, you know, the next roof project for the school or the next replacement of a cloud truck. It's all part of the infrastructure. We don't need to spike it out specifically.
Alright, so scratch it, cause it's, it falls under A, yeah.
So in that case, then do we have a a three? Or is it just correct, have a general catchall?
Well, you really should have, I mean, you could say, you could just leave three without any specifics under it, but then. You'd wanna have, you know. How, how do you plan to support?
Right.
Promote sound recreational opportunities.
You need, you need.
You know.
I mean, if you don't, if you don't have action items underneath the goal, then you don't have goal.
So again, in that case, that we collaborating, well, I I try to do is collaborate too often, but um, that that word or another one. Yeah, with Parks and Recreation, the Recreation Advisory Board. As they.
On recreational opportunities.
In the town, because as an example, I think Council, your check noted. At our meeting yesterday that they are going forward with doing volunteer fundraising efforts for skating.
Right.
So that's an, you know, an ongoing or a recreational opportunity that could become a long term. Uh, fixture within the community, similar to, you know, pickleball courts or other. Facilities that have been established or have funds committed to them.
So my only pushback on that would be like the pickleball. They did all that without us.
Yeah.
Because Bruce evaluates what the town needs or wants, and then he develops programming for it. We don't micromanage that. We don't say. What programs are you putting out? Which programs aren't you putting out? Like Bruce does a great job in the recreational area of gauging. Public interest by the programs and plans that he's putting out, who's doing that, he gets the feedback and then he develops new programs. I feel like we can't take credit for any of that. We're not doing it. We're not, we're not involved in any part of that. Like the whole skate thing has been a movement by the public. They've gone to Bruce. They've talked to him, they've provided it. We're not gonna do anything. For that. It's gonna be a program that Bruce puts forward, so. I don't feel like we can take credit for what Bruce is actively doing as his job as a recreational director. I mean, sure, we can if we want to take an easy win, but I think that's kind of crappy.
Is that, well, I think our capital budget has, you know, a a budget of quite a few years out for a pickleball court.
I thought they were doing those. I think they already have them. He told me that they were, they were down in at um, here in.
I think he's doing um, like old tennis courts or something.
Yeah, he's he's taking the old tennis courts and converting them to pickleball. Down at uh, Harren Cope two. No, here in one, here in two, terrible, yeah. Like they, as far as I knew, he was already.
I think maybe he's thinking about doing it, because I know there's, it's in the capital plan. I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I remember being mentioned by the former, you know, former town manager, Rosen, but yeah, I I. I can't recall what.
Just because the cost involved with it, that we're trying to figure out when can we put this in. Now, he's, he might be doing something in the interim.
Temporary.
Yeah. That that could be the case.
But that would then, then that would fall under our capital plan.
It is.
Right. So that would fall back under our infrastructure and in capital plan. Like this one here, I just struggle with this one because what do we do? How do we do that?
Well, we. I like the idea of the recreation.
You know, we don't. That's the thing. We don't review it like Bruce does. He's the director. He implements in that. We don't ever get it. We don't see it. We don't say. Yes, go forward with this. No, go, don't go forward with that.
Shouldn't be.
No, no, I, I think that, that's, yes, I agree that that's too micromanagement, but. In as part of our staffing that comes from our budget. We put some money towards recreation every year. As part of our capital infrastructure, we put money towards recreation every year. It's part of the larger picture. In terms of services that the town has for residents.
So then does it more effectively, it's part of services? Again, like I feel like it's kind of in there already. You know, we. We do review their budget, but the majority of their staffing is paid for by the programming that they do with the exception of Bruce. So, you know, that's in the budget in. Programming. I just don't know what. What is the town having, other than saying, yes, we approve the budget and we give you your budget.
I mean, the the recreation.
They're self funded.
Pretty much pays for. Um, there is a little bit in the town budget. That provides support for the director's salary and some utilities. However, um. This, again, this was part of the original vision.
I know.
Yeah, so it may be one that, you know, we do move forward with the the next town manager to. Redefine our vision that this may not be a part of it or might be folded into another section.
And maybe we don't put a deliverable underneath here, because I just can't think of what we could honestly do as a council that isn't taking credit for the work that somebody else is doing.
Well, that's true, but I liked where you were going with the recreation advisory.
Yeah, I think it's, it's trying to go to the same.
Be open to. Listen to opportunities or new initiatives from the recreation advisory committee. Which would be anyway.
It's it's almost comparable to. Our, you know, his, you know, people with disabilities commission, we have a section review other areas of potential accessibility concern. It could be. Collaborate with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as needed.
Yeah.
You know, it, I mean, it feels like kind of a softball goal, but I think it helps cover a deliverable that, you know, if the recreation advisory board, they go to liaison and say. We really need the council's buy in on this, whether it's an event or a program or a service that they would like to consider, then they come back to us and we can um. You know, have that opportunity to collaborate. And if there are opportunities, we can say, yeah, we checked it off, we did something. If we didn't, we say, well. They were able to manage and run themselves on their own very well, and that can then be a part of that. Other discussion about the missions and and values uh, statements that we develop.
They just did, I was just looking, they just did a survey too.
Yeah.
So kind of gives.
It gives a material, yeah. Write feedback to the council if they, if they so chose or if they see some opportunities in addition to. You know, there'd be orange in the skate park or dog park, but there are different options for that survey. That they may see as, you know, areas of collaboration with the town, that the skate was the most. I appealing one or the most one that got most traction currently, but they may say, well, that road. We may, this, this, and this, or we may be interested in these certain uh, items. So. Would everyone be okay with with that as kind of a catchall term as an ongoing goal to collaborate with parks or the collaborate with the Parks and Recreation Board as needed? Just to fall as like a catchall goal or action item under three.
Sure.
Okay.
I just want to say, first, Tammy, the pickleball, she's looking at Bruce's survey. It must not be happening because that was, in your opinion, not in recreational facilities in town we don't have. So we must not have. They must have just like a temporary field. They've got something, because I know people have been down and using it and I know that they were putting it out there and they couldn't put the. Skate field back down there because they were using it for pickleball courts. So there's pickleball courts somewhere in Tallahassee.
Yeah, I think they were using an old tennis court.
They are, right. He might want a new facility.
He's talking about.
So I did find in the twenty twenty one February eleven capital budget public hearing, they had put in year four continued Parks and Recreation, Los Angeles Grant and non refer to debt. New pickleball courts at Harren Cope, one hundred and seventy three. So it's year four of what was in the twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty two budget, so it's it's multiple years out, so it hasn't even.
The new ones online.
Yeah.
And it is in there. I'm not sure if it's year three, four, or five, but it's out there.
It's out there, but. Not if, not officially established. Okay, so then the last one, I think was item four, engaging citizenry, be committed to the betterment of the entire. Sorry, I jumped that. The entire community encouraging and then in brackets, yeah, a balance among open space residential development. Increase conversion, develop, create, build, involve types of freelance opportunities, this effort, solid economic plan. Let's scroll down a little bit, please. No worries. I think this one's very lengthy, so I'm actually not gonna go through it. I'll revolve, but I think we'll just start from the top with that first.
Well, we as a, I think. Consistently with what Tammy's been saying. We aren't going to be building commercial property ourselves.
No, and we can't, we can't actually do commercial. Only thing that the town council can do when it comes to economic. Development or property in that is to give tax abatements. We can encourage, you know, growth by, like, if you think about this here, planning and zoning handles the zoning. They decide where, what can be built, where it can be built, when it can be built, and what the permits are. Town council has absolutely, positively nothing at all to do with that. The only thing we can do is commit to being. Business friendly to if a business wants to come in or if a developer wants to come in, but even that, we have to be careful because we can't step on the toes. Of planning and zoning, the design board and everything else. We have to be very careful with what we put here, so we stay in our own lane, because you can get into a lot of trouble as a town if the town council starts overseeing other areas that they don't have. Decisions over. So. For us, like balance within all types of grandlets properties with this effort, solid economic development plan, our economic development plan is the P O C D. Nothing at all to do with town council. So our role in this is to. Support if something comes forward, like if something comes forward, to be open to listen and. Try to find ways to make it more appealing for business to come here, but permit fees, rules, regulations, none of it town council.
So maybe then under A. As an example, so support opportunities that balance open space residential and economic development as needed. So that it's really only if it comes before our purview that when we act upon any decisions. That we're trying to create that balance between open space residential and economic development. Cause that, cause that could fall under land acquisition, land sale, you know, there could be opportunities that there's town owned property that could be sold or town or privately owned property that could be. Acquired, whether it's for conservation purposes or or, you know, if we needed to say. If there's a property deal that could allow for the establishment of a new recreational field. You know, that would probably be within the balance of open space and then residential slash economic development.
So I think the town owns two.
Yeah.
Pieces of property, what one that's down in the industrial park, that's less than two acres and one that is seven acres, that's over here by Crandall.
Yeah.
And. The one at Crandall has limitations on us selling it or doing anything with it because of the way it was donated. The only one we can only actively sell is the park and it's the lowest piece of land there that has flooding issues.
It's all ledge and. So it's not developable.
We can't, we don't own any land that we can sell for development. And majority of our open space is donated with. Or we purchased it.
For this particular goal, you make those, I mean, you get your various commissions making the recommendations. But you're the final say and depending on the amount, the citizens are the final say, but has to go to referendum on certain items.
And Tallahassee, like, that's the thing, if you look at our land mass breakout, the state requires X amount of a town, the open space, Tallahassee more than doubles it. We have twenty three percent of our land mass is open space. Residential and economic development, we can't do anything with residential and economic development, other than if a. Full plan is approved by planning and zoning, design board, waters, inland and wetland, they come before us and ask for an abatement. It's the only. The only thing we can affect.
This is really a goal, in my opinion, for planning and zoning.
Yeah, it's not us.
But it's not part of the original vision mission.
Yeah, there's nothing here that we have, only thing that we have to say over is whether or not we give the bait.
Make it a goal. Pass along the planning and zoning. Support planning and zoning in.
Right, you know, you could put something in there about, but even that, like it's, it's, it's lip service, like. We. We can't like. Maybe, you know, like, I don't know if there's a way to say that we can support the initiatives. From the other elected boards, but then does that commit us to anything?
Well, I mean, there's things at a state level that could be advocated by the town councils such as um. I can bring some economic development that the governor's working on to maybe try to bring it into our community.
Absolutely.
Um, so there's things that you could do to advocate that, maybe.
To Ben C T.
Yep, uh, UConn, uh, if they are doing something, maybe there's some sort of initiative. That could put. Maybe an active, well, I don't think you want to do that. Uh, I'm just throwing some ideas out.
We could, we could put something in there about advocating at the state level for, to bring um. economic. Oh, God, what, like, there's a ton of funding, but Tallinn's never really considered for it. But there is advanced CT, right? We did have a meeting with advanced CT and they have a lot of tools that they were looking at to promote areas. We could be more actively involved with advanced CT to try to petition for places to come to Tallinn. But they would have to still, still then go through the planning and zoning make sure that it's correctly zoned for Tallinn.
The bond are considering partnerships, if I'm hearing correctly, considering partnerships with advanced CT buying under, or like, it's for A, as a potential option, because then the council would be engaged in. I know we had discussions then in the past, but we could go back to that and see if there is another opportunity or a different way that we can be engaged with that in terms of engaging citizenry, which could include landowners and business owners.
Yeah, seek state, seek support from agencies to bring business. I'm trying, we have, we, our job is to advocate for Tallinn, right? So how do we advocate to get business here in Tallinn? Through advanced CT and the programs, well, right, so.
What do you see itself to?
The E D C, right, because that's what, that's.
You see, even tourism, the tourism council that Brenda's involved with.
Yeah.
Bringing initiatives to bring people into this town is not only going to bring them to do, you know, tour some of our museums and things like that, but also to visit some of our restaurants. And if we had more retail of some sort, maybe visit that, or if we had a brewery, maybe they'd go to lunch there or dinner or do something, you know what I mean?
I agree, but we can't, we can't do any of those, bring those things. But the four-town project committee, we were involved in that. We were definitely involved in that, creating a marketing plan for the four towns. Like, you know, reference to recently updated planning, that's not a goal. That's like, yeah, Fanning did their P O C D, here it is. Housing options in town, affordable housing, Tallinn can't, we can't, short of Tallinn buying land and creating affordable housing on its own, we are required, we have to wait for a developer to come in that wants to build affordable housing here, and then we can facilitate it with abatements, but we can't.
Actually, you're not, it wouldn't, well, what you're going to be presented with at the next council meeting is going to tell you sort of what some of the initiatives going forward because of state laws, things like that, that will be effective to encourage affordable housing. And one part that will be your responsibility in months down the road, we're just sharing the information with you at the next council meeting to at least give you an idea of what's going on, is to be able to support a specialized trust fund to put funds aside for affordable housing, which would come from developers. It's an attempt to try to address affordable housing. Planning and zoning is doing the regulation. However, your part in this would be an ordinance establishing a trust fund. So, you know, there is a link there to try to support affordable housing that you would be behind. You know, I don't know how you could support any other housing options in town. And we have the nonprofit housing
Yep.
commission, you have your elderly house. You have the Parker Place.
About, I don't know how, this is, again, it's theoretical. If a developer comes to town and wants to develop, we will commit to working with them in the town's best interest to develop housing or retail or anything, but to get within our scope.
But again, that's, I mean, like you said, it's theoretical, it's, we can't really set a goal on something like that. I mean, it's gonna be able to measure it.
Yeah, I agree. There's nothing that we can. I think the four-town project committee, we're still working on that. That's still something that's going on, creating that marketing material. That is something that should be a goal. I don't even know who was on it anymore. E D C had somebody, and then I think Mike was on it, Mike Rosen was on it.
I'm on it. I'm attending there, I have David attending all the meetings.
So you guys are doing the work again, we have it as our goal.
I, you know, like I said, I attend when I can, sometimes I'll just have to update you. We're also meeting with the Town County.
Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're great, talk to them, I see.
Yeah. No, regarding making town business-friendly, I think that was Sammy's goal. And there, and I have more information, this may be an earlier version, but there were several different initiatives and regulations changed and put in place to address that concern and that idea of trying to make town more business-friendly.
Planning and zoning, right?
Yeah, planning and zoning, behind that, the town council can't make that decision, but planning and zoning did, and they have been addressing that. There's a lot.
But I think that.
It's written down, but it's not on this page.
We do have an ability to affect that again with the taxes and with other decisions that we made as far as it was one of those ones. You know, I think that, my opinion is that the taxes, that's a significant issue we gotta make town business-friendly. If it's something that we have, it's organic tax rate, you're not going to want to have businesses that are not going to want to relocate here or establish here. So I think that's something that, you know, as far as how do we make town business-friendly? You know, it's to make it an action item, to make it something that's, that's a, can be something that we can, that we can have metrics and have, and have certain goals for. It's a matter of, I don't know, like, review. I can't even think of it, I mean, because there's so many different ways that we could, that, that different decisions that we make affect the business atmosphere. But again, it's mainly coming down to the budget issues for us. You know, that's the one thing, that's our biggest aspect where we can affect it, other than ordinances, but our ordinances overall don't affect it. It's their P C C regulations that affect business more than any ordinances. So again, I think putting it as far as a measurable metric issue is how do we reflect that in budgetary decisions? I guess that's a question as far as how do we make that fact, effectuate the wording to reflect them.
So one thing we could, we could do, but I don't know how we would, how we would account for it. For instance, one of the things we hear a lot when it comes from developers about coming to Tallinn is we don't have public utility infrastructure. You know, we don't have, we have high, we have super, our sewer rates are three times every other town around us because we don't have enough people on it. So the sewer rates that Big Y pays here are three times higher than what they pay in Ellington. We don't have natural gas. So, you know, we know one department buildings that were coming up, they want natural gas, we don't have natural gas, we don't have, so.
Yeah, we tried, we tried for that.
Right, we did, we really did, we definitely did. And there was no, no interest from the utility company to come to Tallinn. And it wasn't that Tallinn didn't want it, it was that the utility company said, no, there's not enough there for us to bring the lines up.
But if things start.
Exactly, so is there something? Is there something that we could review to see how we would make Tallinn more appealing to more development by ways of investment in infrastructure? My only concern and caveat there is the entire sewer system was put in with that grand assumption back in the eighties, that you build it, they will come. We got into a perpetual contract, that probably one of the worst contractual things ever, perpetual for sewer with the assumption that we're going to build sewer and we're going to develop, we're going to be three times as sensitive, we are, and it's not going to be a problem. We obviously didn't see that kind of growth, which is why our sewer rates are three times higher than all the towns around us.
I mean, maybe one way to address that is to, and it's gonna, this would be very difficult, but look into a way to sell the sewer system to maybe burn it and and if they somehow link, I mean, their infrastructure is linked. See, the problem is, I don't think they're going to want to buy it because there's not enough users. However, if there's a way to you just don't want to give them this system either, but if there was a way to include it with their system, the cost would be much lower because obviously they have much more users and.
And we have, we already have, we have debt on the books that we can't get rid of with the sewer. We've got the millions of dollars for the sewer improvements, and even if we gave them a sewer, we'd still have to pay the millions of dollars to sew improvements, but we wouldn't have anybody to do it. So that would be like the time to be paying for an asset that Burn owned, but.
There's not. Have to look at it, there's not a lot of sewer debt left. No, I mean, the, the. Oh, yes, yes, yes. So sorry for the infrastructure rebuild. Maybe what we could say is, you know, maybe we can negotiate a contract with them.
Listen, Dan likes it, but Dan doesn't like.
We'll give you everything and you keep the bill.
You can take it all.
You can't, you take all the receivables, pay off the debt, no, no, no.
So what can we?
That's a, that's a very.
So getting back to, to four.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, I was, I was trying to kind of, you know, build up and I, a kind of catch-all statement from what I've been hearing. So at least for four A, one notion would be review and explore ongoing partnerships with internal and external organizations that include, but are not limited to advanced CT, the Economic Development Commission, Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Council, and Fordtown Economic Development Group towards community and economic development. It feels very wordy and very long-winded, but I think it covered a lot of the stakeholders that were listed.
Did you type that up?
I did.
Can you email it to me?
Yes, I can.
No, you have thirty seconds to write it down.
I'm trying, but he spoke too quickly. Unless you want to read it slowly.
Yeah, I can read, I can read it a little bit slower, so. Review and explore ongoing partnerships with internal and external organizations.
Hey, here, hold on, Hero.
I'm at ongoing.
Partner. He'll email it to you. He'll email it to you. Yes.
Review and explore. Ongoing partnerships.
With internal and external. See, Lisa and I are on the same page, Lisa and I. That includes but are not limited to.
Why any problems?
Advanced CT, the E D C, Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Council, and Fordtown Economic Development Group. Towards community and economic development. Let me know, Lisa, I know, I'm taking breaks. I'll email as well, just in case.
Try to change it.
I'll just send that as a one-off, but.
Advanced CT, Chamber of Commerce, state advocacy.
Was that state?
State advocacy.
Yeah, with the governor. Yes, she's, he's trying to bring businesses into the state. Send them our way, which we have to really give them something beneficial.
Seeing state leaders.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that could be in there as well. I mean, that's, I just don't want to put everything in there because it's not limited to, but I think it's something we can have on going, but if you want to.
You said tourism, how about the agriculture? Commission, anything?
I think agriculture, is that in?
Yeah.
Originally, yeah, that could, that could be inclusive on that as well.
Four-town project, Agriculture, Economic Development Commission.
It's everybody in there.
Except for.
All right, so I'll take just about everything in two, plus what else you said.
Okay.
All right.
Can I ask a really stupid question?
Robert Hulman has been.
Um, how was that engage in citizenry to be committed to the betterment of the entire community?
I think some of those partnerships are reliant on citizen volunteers being a part of those groups, such as the Tourism Council, E D C, the Fordtown Economic Development Group, so the I Commission, so there's, there's citizenry that are involved with that as well as the groups they represent, such as the I Commission would be farmers and other individuals, you know, right to farming, I think that was a goal in terms of economic development and community engagement was many years back, was creating the right to farm ordinances in town and having that established through the I Commission and the council. So I think that's an area where we can spur some form of economic development that's within some purview of the town, but not necessarily planning and zoning. So I think that is agreeable to everybody. I have an item B that was kind of taking out, I think it was option, item four, and that was supporting policies that encourage the development of affordable housing and other housing options. And I think we're, we kind of got a teaser of that with the trusts being an ongoing discussion, but I think that there could be additional policies that could, that could encourage the development of affordable housing, other housing options that we could be in control of.
Supporting policies for affordable housing and other additional housing options?
Yeah.
Or other housing options?
Yes.
Affordable and additional housing options, so you don't say housing, right?
So that looks like for B, we had create a town budget that expands, actually, sorry, there is, I think you scrolled out a little bit, leave third employee input for item five. So add, add number five to food, town, town, or staff, sit, staff, and they can see what the state or UConn.
That's.
So we kind of add the state to that, yeah, so I think, I think we're within that area.
Yeah.
Okay, so then B is create a town budget that expands community involvement.
I don't get that.
Yeah.
That was a budget came from your vision. Did you see how I put the word and in there? Because I really put anything under that exactly.
Yeah, like the budget, like, see me again, like, you know, this is, that's our job, that's not a goal. Our job is to put forward a budget.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I think the goal there is the more people come to meetings.
I feel like it's somewhat flipped, it's expanding community involvement within the budget process. So I think, I think that's what the goal, intention was, is to, to explore avenues that create more community involvement in the budget process.
And we have done that.
So.
I like that.
So.
Liz getting tired.
I'm good.
So.
So I'm kind of writing it up for you, Lisa, and I can, I can send it to you or I'll, or I'll read it. But it's explore avenues to create more community involvement in the budget process. And then, and then C was provision of a progressive educational system that needs or exceeds the challenges of public informed knowledge. And I, I had a little bit, a little bit of concern because even though we ultimately adopt the full budget that includes the board education, I'm not sure what scope we would have other than, you know, our continued partnership, you know, strong dialogue with the board of education and superintendent's office through the budget process, like, you know, it's ultimately not within our purview to say what we think is a progressive educational system, that's up to a B O E to really.
And we're past Common Core now, like, three different new pieces of legislation that I've read of Common.
Oh, you can see it's all old language.
I do like the, continue to work with the mental health task force to obtain recommendations for, for addressing mental health community needs.
I mean, that's a separate item, C, D then.
Well, I think.
Or is that a catch-all for the progressive educational system?
I don't think it has anything to do, it's not just education. Like, that's nothing more than bothers me when people think that, that. It's, I don't think it has anything to do, it's not just education, like, that, that, nothing more than bothers me when people think that, that mental health is just about kids.
Yeah.
It's the kids, it's the whole spectrum, it's everybody.
Well, the, the, I just want to back up for a second. So what are we doing with C? Because C is something that I think. Should be just eliminated.
Yes, that's what I was saying, is that, then that case we would be making, so we have A, B, and C. So that leaves all those subsections that's potentially new, like D, E, and F, so that's what I was trying to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if that one becomes B, if the mental health task force becomes B.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's a goal, a measurable achievable goal, is to work with the mental health task force, get their recommendations and decide. What to build into the budget, what, or what we need to do, what we already have, what information we're, we're educating people with. What services are available, like, the mental health has to be one of our, one of our goals. I think what you have there is fine.
Okay, and then what would then be E? Uh, increasing, increased community engagement through reviewing remote participation policies. I kind of just, I, I adjusted it a little bit and made it into a single sentence, I think. Ensuring state statutes will continue to allow, I think that's something that, that's uh. Beyond our scope, I think we would have to wait to see if any legislation comes forward that. Would require or mandate towns to establish permanent hybrid meeting options or providing that access for remote. Participation in the public, I think that's, that's something outside of our scope, but I think internally.
Advocate for it.
Yeah, we could advocate for it.
Yeah, I think the word ensure, Matt, it's only to advocate for.
So yeah, increase community engagement through more participation policies and advocate for, it's like, I missed that last part. Thank you.
Or just advocate. For. State statutes to continue to allow remote meetings. Yeah, I think we take out, like, the remote policy is duplicative. Because if the states, like, the state statute is in place until April, that demands we have it, right? So. The remote policy, if the state statute continues past that, it, our remote policy is non-voyed, it doesn't matter. State supersedes that, so, and I don't know how we measure whether or not it's increasing community engagement other than.
Yeah.
How many people are, are, are logging on and that. Again, I don't think it needs to be explicitly stated in this goal, but one of the ways we can. Move forward with this is to consider. Uh, additional facility spaces. That. Work well for public meetings. Right, because right now it's only this room.
Um, for, for hybrid style meetings, I mean, we can also utilize the library program, I think we have technically two owl cameras that could be utilized for local meetings. Um, and they are somewhat. Flexible in their options, but I think the two major areas would be, at least in the tougher, the council side would be the chambers and the library program. We're probably the top two for capacity, both in person and uh remote. So maybe then just looking back on that, so increasing or increased community engagement and advocate for state statutes that promote remote participation.
Um, I, I, I guess I am strong on with the increase, how do we, how do we define that, like? That one there to me, I think, I think advocating for the state statutes to continually allow remote meetings is the goal.
Remote provide opportunities for increased community engagement. That way.
So. Provide opportunities for increased community engagement and advocate for state statutes that promote, promote participation. Is that agreeable?
Provide opportunities for increased community engagement.
If, and advocate for state statutes. That promote remote participation. Yeah, I think that one's kind of a dual purpose, it's not only residence, it's also what we've been doing for the last year and a half, and we're continuing to do in terms of. Staff, elect, elected and appointed officials, you know, if they're on travel, it reminds that flexibility to establish quorum. Be able to conduct business by having uh remote participation be an opportunity for the public and for officials.
I have good news.
What's the good news?
That one's totally redundant, we're not going to talk about it.
Which one? Yep.
We did it, we're done.
Yeah, I think there's even enough, you know, that means. So I think at this point, then we're at the process notes, which.
So I can delete three.
Yes, yes.
Wait, I want to talk about more.
You gotta put your hood up. Dark elf.
Back to the meeting, but yeah, we just lost someone probably from. We, we hope people are entertained. I, I do want to say, just to circle us back, it definitely has been a longer process, but I think it is good to have this levity during. Using extended conversations, so.
Listen, we, we're all together for the next two years, we all have to work together, so we need to find the humor where we can find it. Dark elf is yelling at me.
So I wonder if in terms of, I don't think, in terms of process notes, do we want these as just a standing? Item as a part of our goals that, you know, in the process of going through these and reviewing them, we kind of make sure that these are in mind.
Yes.
So that, you know, we want to make sure as we're going through them and checking on them, in on them, we see if they're achievable, measurable, realistic. Data-driven decision-making, under each goal, setting review timelines. And being prepared to support any potential funding, staffing departments for achieving those goals. I think that's all pretty reasonable. All right, well, in that case, then I think we have a pretty good second draft, and I think uh, really a special meeting, but then bringing it to. Either the ne, either the next meeting or maybe the January eleventh meeting possibly, because I know. Part of speaking with Mike Wilkinson, I think he's communicated with, with Donna, is that we do want to have those goals. Um, clearly established as a part of our documentation when we advertise the commander position, still want to see what our goals are.
Why don't I just type them up? Tomorrow.
Yeah.
I thought about it. I'll type them up tomorrow and I'll send them out to all of you just for a quick review. I didn't make a mistake or whatever.
No reference to dark elf.
I think we've also had a.
Okay.
All right, so then otherwise, yes, we either have that on the December twenty eighth or the January eleventh, depending on.
Yeah, I'll try to get it on the twenty eighth.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, as long as, I mean, it's a. Yeah, I did see that off the look.
Today.
Doesn't seem too, too lengthy, but this would be an additional item, but shouldn't be too time-consuming.
Yeah, because I think you hashed out just about everything.
Yeah, it's mostly just.
You can't add.
All right, with that being said, then if there's no other discussion. I move on to public participation with three minute limit, I know, we wanted to do the opportunity, I do see that there's at least one individual on. At least one or two that are on for vote participation, so. If you'd like to participate with a three-minute limit, state your name and address, you can click the raised hand icon. Or even it's star nine if you're on a mobile device. It's going once. Going twice. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-one, yeah.
Move, I'll make a motion.
So move by councilor Luba, is there a second? Second by councillor Murray, all is in favor, vote by saying aye. Impose, no objections, that's unanimous, all right, thank you everyone, great second session.